Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna go ahead and get this special city council meeting started. First up is the roll call. Terrell?
Mayor Gill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dukes.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Present.
First of all, welcome to each and every one of you that are here today for our special ceremony. All of you that have cell phones, if you could please turn those off. You could go ahead and leave the photo camera out when we come up. You're more than welcome to take all of our photos. That's totally okay. But if you could do that, we greatly appreciate it. If you'd all please rise for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Jim Carpenter.
Father, we come before you tonight. Lord, as you've instructed us by your word that we were to offer prayer for those that are in authority. But Lord, we do that right now. We ask for wisdom and we ask for counsel. We ask, Lord, that you would shed your grace upon these that are stepping into these roles of responsibility in our city. Father, we ask this that we might live peaceably and in godliness, Lord. Father, we might prosper in a city together. Father, we thank you for your great grace and your mercy over us. And again, Lord, we pray according to your word for leaders and those that are in authority over us. We thank you for wisdom and we thank you for their willingness to serve us, the community. Father, we ask these sayings in the name of your son, Jesus. We pray, amen.
Please remain standing for the posting of the colors. Our guide, please post the colors. Please be seated. We have several dignitaries that are here with us tonight, and I'd like to take this moment to recognize them. Tonight with us, we have our former council members and mayors. Karen Cardassoli. Karen? Bob Barkhouse. Is Leslie McBride here? Didn't see her, but she should be coming in. For supervisors, we've got our vice chairman, I guess our new chairman for supervisors, Ron Solinger. We missed our council member and mayor Ron Sutter. Ron? We also have Supervisor Jim Whitaker. We have our former supervisor, soon to be council member Stan Cleveland. We have Supervisor-elect Dan Flores. We also have our new district attorney Amanda Hopper. We have Sutter County Superintendent of Schools Bill Cornelius. We have Sutter County Education, Board of Education, Mr. Carnbains. And we also have CEO of the UBS Chamber of Commerce Ricky Schaefer. From our wonderful neighboring city of Live Book, we have Councilmember Lackavir Gag. And if I've missed anybody, I apologize. So, welcome once again to this wonderful ceremony meeting. At this point in time, public communication on items on the agenda, members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to go to the podium and comment on anything that's on the agenda here tonight? Seeing that there's no mad rush to the podium. Next up is business from city council, council members. First up is comments from outgoing mayor. That's myself, so I will try to prolong this as long as I can. So, I will, you know, I will do this really, really slow. First and foremost, I want to thank the residents of the city of Yuba City for not only voting for me, but allowing me to serve your mayor not only once, but twice in 2010, and then again in 2014. Thank you to the city council for your confidence, and this past year has definitely been an amazing year. Although as mayor this past year, it's truly a team effort that includes the entire city council, the staff here at city hall. I personally want to thank our Steve Craig or our city manager, our executive team, staff members at city hall for all your hard work and dedication and everything that you guys have done. And next, I want to thank each of the council members for your hard work, time, and dedication. Additionally, I want to thank Councilmember Starkey for your two years of service on this council. And Councilmember Mann for his eight years of service to the residents of Yuba City. So, thank you. And to my wonderful family, my wife Nina. I want to say thank you for everything that you allow me to do, allow me to serve the public. I was told at one point in time, when you run for public office, your life belongs to the public. And you really don't know that until you actually start serving what that means. And there's no way that I could have been able to do the things that I'm able to do without the support and the love of my wife Nina. My children, my daughter Harveen is here, and my son Rajan, who's at school, who could not be here today, is at school, and my youngest daughter Priya. For, thank you for all your support. My cheerleaders, my wonderful, wonderful support rock that you guys are. My goals as mayor last year were pretty simple. In a sense, provide strong public safety for our community through police, fire, and flood protection. Eliminate the furloughs through negotiations. Work and assist with local business on streamlining some of the red tape process that we all hear about. Run the city with a balanced budget. And increase the visibility of Yuba City. This past year, we worked on these goals as a team. And I'm proud to say once again, to report to you, these promises that were made were definitely promises that were kept and promises that were delivered. This past year was a very successful year for us. We did start off the year with negotiations. Although we have not reached agreements with all of our bargaining units, one of my goals as mayor was try to eliminate the furlough program. This past year, we reached an agreement with many of our bargaining units, including law enforcement. Through these new agreements, we will eliminate the current furlough program, and employees will begin paying their portion of retirement costs over the next two years. We also increased our presence through Facebook and social media. For those of you that use Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, you've seen that our social media from the city of Yuba City has gotten very popular. To date, believe it or not, we've got 4,500 Facebook followers. And thank you for the youth commission and all their participation. We are now tweeting, I guess we're Twitter. And in addition to that, we've got Instagram. So, that's all has to do with the youth commissioners. In addition, believe it or not, I know many of you have this app, is a Yuba City app. Questions pertaining to the city of Yuba City, you can send in your questions. And our goal is to get those responses back to you within a 48-hour period. The other goals that we continue is flood protection. As you see within our area, we have 43 miles, 44 miles of levees at work that continues to be done. As incoming chair of the Sutter Beach Flood Agency, I can assure you that working with the other jurisdictions, that Yuba City will be safe from flood protection. And by doing so in a timely manner, we're able to save at least $2,000 per family annually from flood insurance. We're able to provide clean water to the Franklin School Elementary School. For those of you that have got kids going there, you'll know what that means. And also to El Margarita Estates, Wilder Estates, as well as annexing both of those neighborhoods into the city's limits. We were able to update our economic general plan, and that had not been done for the last five years. With the help of 25 business and community leaders, we drafted a plan that allows us to grow, that allows us to highlight some businesses and areas that we, as a city, would like to move into. This last year, we saw two new car dealers come into the area that expanded. And that means a lot for sales tax for our community. We have John L. Sullivan that expanded from Marysville to Yuba City. We had Yuba City Toyota expand into a brand-new lovely facility, state-of-the-art. We had Nissan moving into the old Toyota place. So, it may not seem much for Yuba City, but there's a lot of great things happening. Two of the projects that were really highlighted with this coming year, or this past year, is a Kingsbury project. Kingsbury is a local company here in Yuba City, over 100 years old, and it's from Philadelphia. They make all types of bearings for turbine engines. And instead of moving out of the area, they decided to relocate because our great attention was put on retaining businesses as well as trying to create new jobs. And the other additional one to help us increase the visibility of Yuba City, which was our very favorite California Chrome. And so, we've got a short video that we're gonna show at this point in time. A picture's worth a thousand words, so I figured I'll let you guys watch the video as well.
It weighs millions of words.
Millions of words. We are very, very excited from the city council and exposed to myself as the mayor of Yuba City. One of the projects that I kind of rolled right into, just happened to fall into my laps, was the Kingsbury project. We had talked to this Kingsbury group right around Thanksgiving. We were aware that they were possibly looking to relocate away from Yuba City and back to Philadelphia. We were able to talk to them and have them retain their business right here in Yuba City. They were able to expand, expand into adding additional jobs, or at least 35 new jobs, which is wonderful for job creations. And in the whole process while we were doing this, we were able to get the entire permit process and the project completed within 10 months. That saves a lot for our wonderful staff of Yuba City. That saves a lot for the construction company that built this, Hubers Construction. And it saves a lot for Kingsbury, who calls Yuba City their home. We're very, very excited to share just one of the many success stories that we have, and that's the Kingsbury. For job retention, for job creation, and keeping a company here as far as staying here in the city of Yuba City. So, we're very, very excited for that.
I'm Mike Brawley. I'm the vice president of Kingsbury's Repair and Service Division. We operate two plants, one on the east coast that we've had since 1992. That's about the same size as this facility here in Yuba City. And it became apparent to us over the years that we needed to put another facility in the west to handle the western United States and western Canada. And that's how we came to the west and eventually ended up in Yuba City. Been very happy with Yuba City, so when we decided to build a new facility, we built one in Yuba City. We built up a skill set here and started to develop a clientele. And that's why we're here. In this area, one of the reasons we selected this region was that the California Department of Water Resources operates about 21 plants between hydro and water irrigation. Many of those plants use the Kingsbury or Kingsbury-type thrust and journal bearings. And so, that was a big draw for us, as well as many other power-producing companies, petrochemical processing, and other industrial applications. We also do a lot of work for the US Navy, so this facility helps us support the Navy yards in San Diego and other areas in the west.
One of the other things as far as goals as the mayor that I wanted to take a look at coming across for this year, 2014, was to raise the visibility of our city of Yuba City. And that we looked at two different ways, either through marketing and also through our application process that we have on our iPhones. Prior within last year, prior to the Instagrams, to Facebook, we had about 1,000 followers. And just being more accessible, posting everything quicker, sooner, getting our youth commission involved, and manning the Instagram accounts. I'm proud to say that today, we have more than 4,500 followers. We are getting the news out quicker and quicker. We are making it accessible at your fingertips. And with our wonderful horse of California Chrome, we were able to raise the visibility, not only in Yuba City, but throughout the United States. And we're very, very grateful for Denise and Perry Martin, who was able to assist in coming to Yuba City and receiving the proclamation and the key on behalf of the city of Yuba City. But to all of the residents that was able to come out and celebrate, not one, but two races that successfully won, and the third race almost got it, we want to thank you. And it's because of yourselves that Yuba City is a great place to live, it's a great place to work, and it's a great place to raise your children, and it's a great place that we call home. So, thank you. It's like I mentioned, retention and expansion of existing businesses is a key to a future and success of our community. The Kingsbury project shows exactly why Yuba City is a perfect place for growing business. We understand that time is money, and Kingsbury was able to complete their new facility, from start to finish, within less than 10 months. Promoting our city is important. In this past year, we were nationally recognized as the home of California Chrome. I want to thank Denise and Perry Martin and all those that played a key role in California Chrome and the success of Pluma Street. Once again, thank you so much, and I was honored to be your mayor, not once, but twice. At this point in time, I would like to ask my lovely wife Nina to come out to the front. No kisses for you guys, I'm sorry. Okay, next thing up on the agenda is farewell and presentations to Councilmember Starkey. Before we give you the hugs and kisses and all that good stuff, comments from yourself, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an interesting two years. I'm very glad that I had the opportunity to be on the city council, to see a different side after having been on the planning commission for so many years. I feel confident, and I think our incoming city council people will quickly realize the high quality and level of staff that we have. They do such a good job, and they really care about the people. And I'm talking all the way from the city manager down to the guy who sweeps the floors. Everybody in the town, the city, has a terrific attitude and does a great job and does more than is expected of them. I think that the city is getting better financially incrementally. The economy is slowly picking up here where it may be faster in some other areas. But I believe the city has got an excellent plan and an excellent vision for down the road and where we're heading. And with the team we have in management, I think that we can be nothing but better than we are now. And we're pretty damn good now. So, thank you very much for having the opportunity. Thank you for electing me through the four of you, or three of you, since I was appointed and I elected. But anyway, that's pretty much it.
Great, if you can join me in the front. It's working. They told us to take pictures first. I'm not done yet, that's all right. Craig, on behalf of the city of Yuba City, it's my honor to present you with the proclamation. Craig Starkey has served the citizens of Yuba City as council member from 2012 to 2014, as well as total of nine years on the planning commission. Craig's focus for Yuba City includes emphasis on the city's economic development, future commercial and residential growth, to continue enriching the quality of life that is currently enjoyed by the citizens of Yuba City. Craig represented the city of Yuba City on several boards and commissions, including Sutter County LFO, Yuba Sutter Transit Authority, Regional Waste Management Authority, Yuba City School District Committee, and the Yuba-Sutter Regional Arts Council. Craig's accomplishments during the tenure are too many to list, but include holding a joint meeting with the Sutter County Supervisors regarding partnership on regional issues, funding the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce Tourism and Visitor Center, installing irrigation wells at City Park, authorizing the downtown area wastewater system project, authorizing the contract of the Fifth Street Bridge final design, began the Clean and Safe Program to address issues related to the city's image, reputation through the improved safety and the light remodeling, including shopping cart roundups, Walk for Your Wheels campaign, anti-aggressive panhandling ordinance, no camping in city limits ordinance, completing Phase 1 of the Feather River Parkway project, and beginning the design of Phase 2. You did all that by yourself. That's why they say there's, yeah. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Cash Gill, mayor of Yuba City, and hereby recognize Craig Starkey for his commitment and contributions to the city of Yuba City. Craig, congratulations. A Christmas gift for you, put underneath the tree. You don't want to open it until later on. It is our official pen of City of Yuba City. Pen? Exactly. Also, Craig Starkey, council member, City of Yuba City, 2012, 2014, with our new city logo as the new agricultural hub of the region. Also, this is a photo of our brand-new fire trucks. If you saw that, we just got them today, so they're outside. Do that, yep. Not done. Congressman John Guaramendi could not be here, but we've got a certificate here in the honor of Craig Stark in recognition of his service, council member, City of Yuba City, December 2002, 2014. So, from Congressman Guaramendi. He signed it, yes. Yep, and also from our Senator Jim Nielsen, who could not be here. Also got presented Craig Starkey recognition for your service, city council, Yuba City Council from 2012, 2014. Thank you once again, Craig. Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, Craig? Forgot. No, we're not done yet. We also have our new chairman of the Board for Sutter County, Mr. Ron Solinger. He's gonna come up and give you a proclamation on behalf of Sutter County.
Due to default, this is my first day on the job, and so if I screw this up, you know. In a small community, you have the benefit of knowing a lot of folks. And I have known Mr. Starkey for a number of years, and I've had the pleasure of playing a little golf with him in the past. And of course, now that it's time for him to hang it up as city council member, you have heard from Mayor Gill and the list of accomplishments. But quite frankly, speaking for Sutter County, we too would like to thank you for your service. Since Sutter County and Yuba City are joined at the hip, we'd like to think that there's a communication level and an acceptance of partnership that we can portray to one another. This is a resolution that, we've heard all of the things, the accomplishments that you've done. I'll read the bottom line, which says, "Therefore, be it resolved that the Sutter County Board of Supervisors Office congratulates to Craig Starkey upon the occasion of his retirement, and causes the names of each of its members to be affixed on this gold resolution as evidence of the board's individual and collective recognition of his accomplishments and contributions during his career as Yuba City council member. And in recognition of the important work that he has done serving the residents of Yuba City and Sutter County." Thank you very much, Mr. Starkey. I'm gonna leave that with you.
Thank you. That's all right. Okay, next is a farewell presentation to Councilmember Tejman. Comments from Councilmember Mann. Was that on your iPad?
Yes, it's on my iPad. Wow, eight years. It's like just yesterday, we were talking about running for an office. I arrived here as a little kid, 39 years ago, from a little village from India with my parents. And I had no plan. Just from a village, just a wonderful country, and didn't know much about it. Speak the word English and started our city hive, city honker, and learn English, learn American, a little bit about American culture, and we can have classes. So, I got accepted to UC Davis four years later, and four years there, and back to Yuba City. I've been working for Yuba County for the last 28 years. Been in this community, just love this community. I can't imagine being anywhere else but Yuba City. Most of my family, one by one, they kind of snuck out, and they're all from Fresno to Boston. they kind of snuck out, and they're all from Fresno to Boston. Uh, my son, who finished his law last year and passed his bar, and got a job here in California, and in just a few months, he's now in Manhattan, snuck out, so. And, and then I was saying, you know, I'm looking forward to late, uh, go this better, that better, and I'm like, whenever I go visit them, go to these different places, and I'm just like, I can't wait to get back to Yuba City. And I come back and I'm like, don't know what an awesome place we're living in. It's a paradise. I mean, I'm in for space, stuck on traffic, on, and, and the freeway names, and, I mean, who wants to be on a freeway? Uh, so, it's just been a wonderful, wonderful life. I've, I've just enjoying my life, kind of private citizen, pretty private, kind of shy guy, didn't even talk to much. Uh, working at the county, make, raising a family in this wonderful community, things are going wonderful. 9/11 happens. Uh, first casualty of 9/11 aftermath, these gentlemen, we're going to candlelight vigil and saying, you know what, this, why does, why does a guy die just because he's working in a turban? What was his crime? And so people in the Yuba City community are going, you know, we have nobody in politics. How do you teach people about, how do you eliminate ignorance? How do you bring awareness that we're all one people? We're, we're all created by the sin of God. We're, I'm God's children. Why does, hey, how do we, several people in the community talked about, you know, we just need to get out and, and, and become part of the community. We, we hang out in our temples, at our farms, and we need to assimilate and become part of the community. And that's, uh, I started thinking in, uh, in 2002, when I decided to run, first people that were laughing were, were people from my own, uh, community, from the temple, like, wow, an Indian guy ran for an office, was going to vote for an Indian. It's just, that, that was the culture. Not, nobody's ever ran, nobody lost, nobody won, nobody ran. Uh, it's been pretty close. We, we had a good campaign. The community was awesome, supporting. We just, I just didn't know what I was doing. I was an official just first time I was running. Uh, we, uh, this, uh, City, uh, Council, uh, by 39 votes, uh, came, two votes ahead of the City Mayor there. But I thought that was a pretty good accomplishment, and I was satisfied. Hey, we've raised our voters, we brought, like, a group that's a big part of this community that wasn't involved in the political arena except for fundraising, for other candidates, but this wasn't involved. So, I was glad to be sort of pioneer and get people thinking and then be involved in this. Later on, uh, myself and the mayor ran, and we were successful. Third time, uh, I ran, and we both ran, and they said, listen, only one Indian can win. Only one. You decide which one you're going to run. I said, this is America. You know, there's, it's not a quota, one Indian, you know, they'll, so. So you know what happened? A woman came in first, and the two Indian guys came in second and third. What that shows... What that shows is Yuba City doesn't need to eliminate ignorance. There aren't, people aren't ignorant here. People are already educated. People already understand that we're all human beings, that we all, we're all good people. Uh, when I moved here in 75, I spent a few years in Bay, uh, a few months in Bay Area, in San Mateo, and it was just wonderful, nice. And I moved here, and this town was still a little rough back then. It was a little, uh, little hick town. It was, uh, I remember called, hey, hey dude, go home. And I'm going, I'm sorry, I'm sick. I didn't know there would be derogatory. Hey raghead! I, I don't, I don't have ragheads. This is the way I look back, you know? But after a while, I learned, they're, they're not friendly guys, you know? They're, they're not being friends. But it's the same community that elected when we ran, they let the two of us. This community has moved on. This community, uh, is, is a wonderful community. And this is a community, I'm telling you, it's the biggest secret in this world. What a wonderful place to raise a family. So, get, I get elected, eight years, and 9/11 and what happened, I got, and got involved with a wonderful team, many, uh, councilmen that, that aren't here, that, that are a part of this team. I'm not going to list over, go over things. Some of the things you accomplished, maybe Mayor Barker started, or Mayor Bart- Bartelli started, and some of the things we started now, that will be, people will be cutting ribbons on them five, 10 years from now. It's a team effort. What you got is a great bunch of people and awesome staff. Like I said, from the City Manager down to the Janitor, everybody cares, everybody works hard. This city, we just, this generation lived through the worst economic times that you can think of, in, that anybody lived. And we came through with very, very few lessons, very few cuts, and, and we continued with the infrastructure, expanding our critical plants, building levees and roads like we didn't have ourselves. It's because of the staff, it's because of everybody involved, because of the great leadership. Not one person, it's all of us. We come and go, uh, couple of new wonderful people coming in, couple of people leaving, uh, staff stays, awesome City Managers stay. But this city is an awesome hand. Anyway, eight years go by, and I'm enjoying life, I'm loving this life of New York City Council. My wife says, okay, you had, you're fine, it's eight years, your kid that was in third grade is, uh, finishing high school, your other son's done with school, and your other son's done with law school, and he doesn't even live in Cal- California, he's in Manhattan, New York, come back home with, I got some things for you to do at home. It's been two families. I wish I could stay with both, but I gotta go with my original family. But what a life. If you haven't ever thought about serving the community, it's a lot of sacrifices, but what you get back for giving your community and making your community better. Don't sit out and complain. Get involved, get involved on Planning Commission, Boards, or, or for the Council. It, it's a beautiful community, make it better. I hope we were able to make it a little better, and then the people coming will make it a lot better. So, again, I want to thank my wife and my, uh, children for, uh, letting me do this, and, uh, thank the, all your wonderful advice. I've grown up person, uh, as, with you guys and the former, uh, Council Chair, and it's an honor to work with all of you and the staff. Thank you.
Now the fun starts. We've got proclamation here, everything that you've accomplished in the eight years. Tejman has served honorably with a great dedication as a Councilmember of the City of Yuba City for eight years from 2006 to 2014. Tej's focus for Yuba City included greater flood protection, economic development, job creation, streamlining the city's permit process. Tej represented the City of Yuba City on several boards and commissions, including Sutter County LFO, Regional Housing Authority, Yuba City Transit Authority, Sutter Animal Services Authority, Feather River Air Quality Management Authority, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. Accomplishments during these last eight years are too many to list, but include the Centennial Celebration ribbon cutting for the reopening of Pluma Street, establishment of the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, and the successful passage of an assessment for the much-needed levy improvements, creation of the Regional Gain Unit, completed the Police Department Facility Expansion, the opening of new Fire Station Number Four and remodel of Fire Station Number Seven, development and implementation of the Homes to Family Program, completion of the Lincolnne Specific Plan, completion of the Marijuana Cultivation and Mobile Vending Ordinances.
Harvested?
Yeah. I know you approved it, so. Plenty of time now. Formation of the Sutter Animal Services Authority and building the new animal services shelter. Completed the Western Parkway, uh, Highway 20 intersection improvement project. Now therefore be it resolved that I Cash Gill, Mayor of Yuba City, uh, do hereby recognize Tejman for his commitment and contributions to the City of Yuba City. Tej, on behalf of, uh, City of Yuba City, uh, we have a gift for you as well for Christmas. I know Councilmember Starkey's looking at that one and looking at this one. I, I think she's already got that one figured out. Also, the City of Yuba City, by the way, that's a watch. So you can tell time when you're retired now. City of Yuba City presented Tejman, Councilmember, City of Yuba City, 2006, 2010, and 2010 to 2014, presented here on December 2nd, 2014. Usually. Uh, also a picture of our beautiful fire engines that we just got today. And also a certificate, uh, from John Garamendi, Congressman, who could not be here today, in the honor of Tejman in recognition for his service as Councilmember of the City of Yuba City, signed by Congressman John Garamendi. And then our good friend Senator Jim Nielsen could not be here today. You saw him today earlier. He could not be here, but... Yeah, he, he didn't spell his name correctly. Oh. Presented to Tejman in recognition and, uh, for your service for City Councils, Yuba City, City Council from 2006, 2014, uh, which included exemplary effort to utilize your position to create jobs, streamline the permit process, and guarantee flood protection. Signed on behalf of Senator Jim Nielsen. At this point in time, I'm going to ask for our Chairman Supervisor, Ron Solinger, to come up.
Our politicians need to take English. Selling is just four letters. They got three right.
Uh, I'm being a little repetitive here. I, I get the feeling, um, as I said, I, you know, I've had the pleasure of knowing, uh, a lot of folks, you being one of them. I remember the very first time that you came by the house with your wife, that's the first time I met you. Since that time, I decided to run for the Board of Supervisors, and since you live in my district, I've never had the chance to ask you, did you vote for me?
That's a private thing.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I didn't even call you a towel head, you know? I never did. It's an upscale.
It would be funny now.
In, in behalf of Sutter County, we really do appreciate the work that you've done, uh, over these years, and, and as I say, we're kind of joined at the hip, Yuba City and Sutter County. Uh, we're looking forward to working together with Yuba City. But since you're leaving, maybe you can continue to be a consultant and give me some help along the way in my district, since you're a constituent. I'm looking forward to that, but I'm going to read the end of this. It says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Sutter County Board of Supervisors offers congratulations to Tejman upon the occasion of his retirement, and causes the names of each of its members to be affixed to this gold resolution as evidence of the Board's individual and collective recognition of his accomplishments and contributions during his career as Yuba City Councilmember, and in recognition of the important work he has done serving the residents of Yuba City and Sutter County." Thank you very much.
Things just keep getting bigger here. It's my honor. Mr. Cash Gill has served our community with great dedication as Mayor of the City from 2013, 2014. Cash's highest priority is public safety, including strong staffing for police and fire, completion of upgrades to our levees in a timely manner, adopting the city's clean and safe initiatives. Cash represented the City of Yuba City on several boards and commissions, including Gilizer Drainage District Board, Successor Agency Oversight Board, Sacramento Area Council of Governments, Screening Committee, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, and the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority. The accomplishments of this year are too many to list, but include a few here. Adopting of the 2014 Growth, our Grow Our Economy Work Plan and associated implementation plan, addressed issues related to the city's image and reputation through the improved safety and blight removal, clean and safety program, promoting the city through California Chrome and Triple Crown events, providing expedited services to Kingsbury to allow the building of their new facility, approved Every Drop Counts Water Conservation Campaign, approved the city water contract with the Department of Water Resources through 2035 to assure that we have plenty of drinking water, completed the Proposition 84 Waterline Expansion Project, addressed the issues related to the city's image and reputation through the improved safety and blight removal. Therefore be it resolved that I John Dukes, Mayor of Yuba City, do hereby recognize Cash Gill for his commitment and contributions to the City of Yuba City as Mayor in 2013 and 14. Congratulations. It's also my honor to present you with a gavel, your own gavel. And this one here, I'm going to let you hold that. This is a signed tee-shirt that is signed by Denise and Perry Martin. In California Chrome. I think he stepped on the back of it, but anyhow. This is presented to you by the executive staff of Yuba City in your, uh, honor for all you did to put Yuba City on the map, uh, with California Chrome. Thank you. Okay, next up is election results. City Clerk to announce the November 4th, 2014 election results. Terrell?
Um, the general municipal elections were held on November 4th, 2014, for three seats on the City Council. On November 20th, 2014, the Sutter County Register of Voters certified the following official results. John Buckland with 27.1% of the votes, Stanley Cleveland Jr. with 23.9% of the votes, Anne Preet Dibbal with 18.9% of the votes. It is recommended that the City Council declare elected John Buckland, Stanley Cleveland Jr., and Anne Preet Dibbal.
Thank you.
The Mayor?
Yes.
It would be my honor to move the resolution.
Great. I have a motion.
And I will second that.
Got a motion by Councilmember Starkey and a second by Vice Mayor Dukes, all in favor seeing if I by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, at this point in time, we would like to administer the oath of office. And first up, if you can come up to the front, is Councilmember-elect John Buckland. Aye, John Buckland. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will swear every time. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. On which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Welcome, and then there were three. Next up, if we can have Councilwoman, Mr. Stan Cleveland.
Aye, Stanley Cleveland Jr.
Aye, Stanley Cleveland Jr. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Okay, now there are four. Would like to ask Preet Dibball to come up.
Aye, Preet Dibball.
Aye, Preet Dibball. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties. Upon which I am about to enter.
Perfect. At this point in time, we got business from city council members, comments from our newly elected council members. First up is Councilmember John Buckland.
Thank you, Mayor. It has just, it's been an absolute honor to be able to work with the council members that I have in the past four years, to have learned and certainly to work alongside individuals that were very well versed in the business of this community. I've learned a lot from our mayor. In fact, he was the first East Indian and Sikh mayor in the United States. And it's been a pleasure to be able to have he and Tej mentor me with the Sikh community. It's been an absolute pleasure to learn more and have a greater understanding of the community and to become integrated and part of that community myself. Craig Starkey was an absolute pleasure to have on the council. Learned a lot from him. If anyone is thinking of engaging him in a golf game, he cheats. Just thought I'd make it clear, but he was a very honest council member here. One special acknowledgement I'd like to make to Tejmon, I certainly appreciated his two birthdays each year. You'll have to ask him more about that in the future. But it's been an honor to, and will be an honor to continue to serve the citizens of Yuba City. During the course of the campaign, it can be taxing. We have members, Daria was out on the campaign trail, Jason, and us three were on the campaign trail. And there's so much that goes on. Without our families, without our supporters, and without the community, obviously none of that could be done. I want to have or say a special thank you to my wife and my family members and my extended family members that are here for their support during the past four years and being at public events and certainly have been my greatest asset during this campaign. The greatest joy I experienced this year was walking door to door. Many of your doors I knocked on. I don't recognize anybody in the room that threw me off their doorstep. But there were some. I knocked on a little over 6,000 doors. I missed my goal of 8,500. I listened to the concern of the voters and answered questions. And especially in the new annexed areas, there were many questions. The message I received was with an overwhelming, or overwhelmingly and also supported by the voters. And that message was clear. The city's on the right track. The leadership has produced positive results after entering and during our exit from the recession, during which the workforce in Yuba City was reduced, but we still maintained a high level of service. Focus on public works projects, repairing infrastructure while stimulating the local economy was received as an excellent municipal business opportunity. There were complaints. And some of those were dealing with our unfunded liabilities and a perceived lack of transparency. I received my charge from the voters. And that's to continue business, the business of this city, focused on leadership qualities that promote economic growth, address the quality of life and safety issues in Yuba City, while addressing our financial liabilities, and doing this all in a more transparent manner. I look forward to the next four years. I look forward to serving each of you in the highest capacity I possibly can. Thank you.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Thank you, Mayor Cash Gill. As many of you know, I'm Stan Cleveland. I'm leaving the, actually as of now, I'm no longer a supervisor of Sutter County. It's a city councilman. And I do want to thank my wife of almost 40 years, my son and daughter-in-law in the back that could attend, and many friends and family that are here tonight to celebrate this, this time. I don't have all the wonderful accomplishments within the city yet. Hopefully they will reach the heights that has already been reached in the past and perhaps together we can even rise higher in the commu-, in the local region in our levels. But I can say with eight years on the county supervisor, I did step away, honored and promised to only run two full terms consecutive. And the biggest response I got was people being upset with me stepping away. So they convinced me I needed to stay in public service. And so I agreed, thank you. And I believe through the campaigning and the results of the count that it was a resounding yes to stay involved. And I am very honored and thankful that that was confirmed. Many of the positive things that have occurred in the, in the county, I hope to be able to accomplish with this good team, city council, to take it up to the next level in economic development, in education, increasing the access of roads. I know we've worked together with the county and the city in the past to work on roads issues. And we dedicated Riego Road as one of them, or Riego Overpass and System today. Mayor Gill was there and a few other representatives also. That's just one of the items that we've been able to accomplish as a team and going to the Capitol and saying, this is what we want in our community. And they backed us up, the city did, and we backed them up on the things that they need. And I expect the same thing to continue, an even better partnership to occur. I'm hoping that my experience, along with the experience of the current sitting council members with the federal and state agencies and the issues that we have coming before us, that we will be able to accomplish the lofty goals that we have set for ourselves in your behalf. Our community is fantastic. I choose to live here, raise my kids, my grandkids, many of them live here, and don't ever plan on leaving. I love where you can go in and plant a seed, nurture it just a little bit, and it grows. That's, that's one of the passions and things that really I enjoy. In fact, I have quite a large garden and fruit trees in my yard. But I appreciate the honor and plan on putting as much effort as I have or more into being a city councilman and serving you this next four years as I did as a county supervisor. Thank you for this opportunity. Looking forward to it.
Councilmember Preet Dibball.
Thank you, Mayor Gill. You know, I never thought that I would be sitting here and say that I'm a councilwoman. It's still surprising to me. I am still dumbfounded by everything that's happened. So pardon me if I'm a little overwhelmed, but I'm very, very excited. It was over 10 years ago when I spoke with my dad for the first time about wanting to be a planning commissioner. And, you know, he looked at me and he said, why not you? So I put my stuff together and I approached Supervisor Larry Munger for the first time. And I did it. So I don't believe Supervisor Munger is here, but thank you for the opportunity to allow me to serve our community. It meant a great deal. And from that day on, I have done nothing less and just want to do more. My parents and my oldest sister came to the U.S. 46 years ago with nothing but the desire to make a better life, to pursue a better life. They worked the peach fields, the prunes, and our local canneries to make a living. And then over the years, there was the additional of three more daughters. And I was one of the first that was born in America, actually right here in Yuba City at Fremont Hospital. Long time ago. As we grew older, we did all work alongside our parents in the peach fields and the prunes. And then I actually worked the graveyard shifts in our local canary. And then I went on as the first child in the family to pursue college. Dad and mom repeatedly told us that we raise you as if you were our sons. And that meant a lot for us in the Indian community. It meant a lot to me because it gave me the wings to fly. They do, they would tell us, go out and do what you want and don't let anyone tell you anything different. Thank you, dad and mom, for, for your teachings and your love. So today, I am here before all of you with the greatest honor and privilege to serve you because I love this town. Bottom line, I love this town and I love the work that I do. I have nothing but passion and the desire to give a bigger contribution to a community and to a place that has given my family, myself, the opportunity to grow and prosper. Yuba City in my heart will always be my home, always. And I know it is for my family as well. Are we dancing? Tonight, I would like to first and foremost thank my mom. If I could do this without it, you. My dad is here with me in spirit. Mom, you have given me the strength. You lifted me up each and every moment. You wouldn't say no, and you wouldn't take no for an answer. Oh my God, my mom walked, and she walked, and oh my God, she walked. She hit every door. You've probably seen her out there. I got phone calls saying she's in front of Walmart passing out lawn signs. Not brochures, lawn signs. Most of all, mom, you gave me faith because you believed. You stood by me and you never let me fall. Thank you, mom, and I love you. Mom. I love you, mom. And to my daughter, where are you? There you are. You swore me in tonight. You are the fire under my feet. You are the one that drives me every day. Not physically in a car, but you drive me for my passion. You drive me to do better. You drive me to be the best that I can. And I do better, not only because you're my daughter, but you remind me every day that every child needs to accomplish academically, economically, and socially to be the best they possibly can. Munchkin? Thank you so much for teaching me to be a better mom and to be a better person. Thank you for all your hard work and your long hours that you were with me each and every step of the way. I'm the five-year-old that sat there through planning commissions with me in the front row for long hours. row for long hours at times and actually fall asleep in the front seat. Sorry. I'll never forget as you grew up and then there was the first meeting where you actually sat up with me in the front and you hit that gavel so hard and then you led us in the pledge of allegiance. You make me proud and I hope I do the same for you. I love you, Munchkin. And for all of you who brought me over that finish line and made this happen, it is because of you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. I have to say that the longest wait was to get that official vote. Oh man, but can we honestly echo the words, every vote counts? So thank you very much to each and every one of you who supported me and stayed up with me long hours. Carrie, DeeDee, who got text messages three o'clock in the morning, no sleep, for, for just the dedication, the commitment to get up and walk with me. I think we hit about the same amount of doors.
I was right behind you.
Yeah, but we did it and I couldn't have done it without you. So thank you everyone for your support and your dedication and to vote. Throughout the campaign, I was humbled by the honesty and the dedication of residents from all walks of life. You gave me hope and you strengthened my dedication that we all share a common passion and that is to keep Yuba City livable, healthy and strong. So we chatted every once in a while and we discussed some of the issues. So my question to you would be, what is a great city? And this is what you responded back. A great city knows good business is environmentally responsible. A great city has strong, safe neighborhoods where children can play outside and we have parks and greenways and healthy activities for everyone. We have families that can walk and bike wherever they would like. I'm sorry that rhymed. I didn't mean that. And a great city is committed to public participation. You may or may not agree with me, every decision I make or every position I take, but you can agree that our responsibility is not only those who we represent today, but to our future generations, young people, our children, who represent our community and our future. I am committed to involve being our children and encourage them to be, to have great pride in our city. The children present today, if you look around, are here today because I wanted to embrace them, empower our children to get involved. They are our future voters, they are our future leaders and someday they'll be sitting right amongst here and looking out that way. I say to all of you, all those kids out there, as my dad told me, why not you? So take it upon yourself and do the best you can because you never know where your dreams will lead you. As a token to my, my commitment to all of you little ones out there, I have little pins and I would hope that you will all come and get one before you leave and it says, believe, achieve, succeed. And I want you to hold this great and carry it with you and I want you to put a dream in your, in your mind and I want you to follow your heart. So with that, I just want to say thank you to everyone once again for supporting me and allowing this moment to happen.
Well, we're getting to that point, so should I just kind of drag it out a little bit longer or tell a little joke or, you know, it's interesting from our past council members who, who are in the audience to the, the new council members and to our current members on the city council. I think all of us do agree that Yuba City is the best place to live, work, raise your family. So if there's a theme here tonight, that's kind of the theme, Ben, is that Yuba City's the best secret. We're going to keep it that way, so. At this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the nominations for the mayor for this coming year. So.
I'll nominate John Dukes as mayor.
Okay, I've got a motion and I will second that motion and we will have a roll call vote. Terrell.
Councilmember Buckland.
Aye.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Yes.
Councilmember Dukes.
Yes.
Councilmember Dibball.
Aye.
Good day. Our new mayor.
All right, and as my first duty as mayor.
Can I have my water first?
Which one was yours? I think it's this one here. All right, I'll take this one here.
First duty, thank you.
Switch the water around.
Here you go.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to open the nominations for vice mayor.
It is my pleasure to nominate Mr. John Buckland as vice mayor.
And I'll second that. All right, I have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Mayor Dukes.
Aye.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckland.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibball.
First of all, I would like to have my lovely wife come up. As has been mentioned earlier, when you're in public life, it takes a lot of commitment from your family and it's, it is a big commitment and I thank my wife for always being there to help support me, to be at all the different events that she goes to and it's a pleasure to have her by my side. Thank you, Jeannie. I just have a few comments so we can get this meeting completed here.
Five pages?
Five pages. No, it's only four. But it's big print, so, small print, yeah. I'm honored to serve as Yuba City's mayor for a second term and I'm hoping to accomplish projects that we as the city council have already been working towards as well as working on new goals for our community. Our biggest concern is the much awaited completion of our levy project and happy to have one of our contractors here in the audience with us tonight. Thank you, Axel. I'm proud to say that I've participated on the Sutter Bees Flood Control Board from the beginning, starting in 2009, along with Councilmember Cash Gill, who will be the chairman in 2015. We will continue as the city's two representatives and our goal is to have the levies finished by 2015. One of my major priorities is to continue to improve Yuba City's customer service. I believe we can do better for our citizens and businesses by stepping up and being more proactive. We will be taking the necessary steps to make that happen. Instead of saying, no, you can't do this, I want us to have the attitude of how can we help you accomplish your goal? When people need cooperation from the city, they don't often know what to ask or the procedures that they need to follow. We need to take the initiative to ask more questions and give thorough answers. We need to be that friend who will go out of the way to help. I've been asked numerous times about when we are going to construct the new Fifth Street Bridge. Both the preliminary design and the environmental impact review have been finished. We will begin starting or begin building that in 2016 or 17, depending on the funding cycles. The completion of that bridge could drug, excuse me, could trigger major traffic congestion on the two-lane section of Bridge Street between Cooper and Gray Avenue. What we need to do is widen that to four lanes. That work should be finished concurrently with the bridge construction so that we have a smooth transition. This will prevent a gap between the two projects that could cause bottlenecks and much frustration for traffic. We are working with SECOC to secure future funding, which will be about nine million dollars for that project. But to get the project underway, first we need the right-of-way property. The city owns approximately sixty percent of that and it's still forty percent that we need to obtain. This is critical to getting Bridge Street ready to handle the influx of traffic from the new bridge when it's completed. That's one of our priorities this year. Another challenge we are facing is housing. No new multifamily housing has been developed here in this city for eleven years and it's primarily because it hasn't been financially feasible. The current impact fee formula is overreaching. We need to revisit the AB 1600 study that set the fees and work with the stakeholders to come up with an equitable, equitable solution that will fairly allow the multifamily housing choices that many of our citizens desire and need. This year I want to see an increase of options and efficiency for making our utility payments. We can encourage electronic billing to reduce paperwork and postage costs. The greater number of customers who pay their utility bills online will reduce the overhead for outsourcing and handling those accounts. This will also be a huge convenience and time saver for all of us able to take care of our utility bills at the click of a keystroke. And I think anyone who's driven down Garden Highway knows that the worst-worn section is between Lincoln Road and Winship Road. We're taking action to get the first phase repaired along with the second phase continuing up to Percy Avenue. Both of these phases should be under construction by summer of 2015. Sutter County's general plan update proposed an increase to the city's sphere of influence to the south of Bog Road. The keyhole area south of Lincoln to Bog should be included in that area. Those residents already have fire, water and sewer services provided by the city. They would get and become eligible for city police services if that was to be annexed into the city. Since annexation would provide higher level of services and cause no increased taxes for those residents, I think this is a positive solution for the residents in that area. With Kmart closing, I would like to see a new retail mixed-use development move there. Maybe a new box store. We've been in discussion with property owners and have expressed our strong interest that this is a prime retail area and it should be kept at its highest and best use. This ties in with the possible railroad right-of-way acquisition that has been, being considered behind Kmart. Since they back up to that property, it would be an additional benefit for that development to move forward. In addition, by having that, that right-of-way, we could have access off of Highway 99 as a ride-in-out access, which would give us much better access to that retail area. We have been encouraged by our connections with the Chinese and the far east markets. We have provided opportunities for agricultural exports. I want to continue this and to build those relationships to incrementally increase our market share and benefit local farmers, which in turn benefits our whole community. Last but definitely not least, is to keep moving forward with privatization of as many city services as reasonable. The transition has begun and it is a step-by-step process, but more can be transferred to contracted services and that will help us in the long run when we try to balance our budget and provide the highest level of service at the lowest cost to our community. In my first term as mayor, I had the vision to make a difference and I found that one year can go by very quickly and as Mayor Cash Gill and John Buckland, previous mayor, can tell you, it goes by very fast. I was able to achieve much success with my goals for the city, but there is still more to do. With the teamwork of city council and staff and support from our community, I believe we can reach and even exceed our expectations for 2015. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you and I look forward to fulfilling the vision together. And now I'd like to have Terrell put up some slides. Many of you have been following on Facebook and know that my oldest son's, youngest son was nineteen years, or nineteen months old, Tucker was diagnosed with cancer last Monday and we found out today that he has over forty tumors in his body. And so they're going to be starting with an aggressive chemotherapy and radiation program. But it's, I just wanted to share and give an update with what's happening with him. We've got one last one, one last slide there, Team Tucker, so if you wanted to help support him on, on Facebook, we covet your prayers. It's, it's hard to understand why things like this happen to such young, young kids, but we know that prayer works and we're holding him up in prayer. And now, would like to have everyone please stand for retiring of the colors. Honor guard, retire the colors. Please be seated. I'd like to thank the Beal Air Force Honor Guard for participating in our ceremony today and I'd also like to thank Pastor Jim Carpenter for the invocation and Wendy Cooper for a beautiful rendition of the National Anthem. Well, that's it, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to close the meeting and thank you.